Good afternoon and welcome to the May meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. I call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and go over our agenda. You should have in your packet the December 19, 2017 meeting minutes, and the Chair would welcome any comments regarding any necessary edits or a motion to approve.
I've read the minutes and would make the motion to approve as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're good with those, Brenda, thank you. And then new business. Joe, if you'd like to present that to the Commission?
Sure. Our one and only item on the agenda today is for the house located at 1,000 East Main Street, which is at the corner of East Main Street and First Avenue. The house was constructed circa 1930 in a bungalow-style architecture with a central dormer on the front and is made of brick with a gabled-style shingled roof. The house is a contributing structure in the East Main Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants want to do several modifications to the home, and so I've listed them out here, and they are as follows. The first item is to replace a front door with a Craftsman mahogany wood door without side lights. Second is to replace a rear door with a Craftsman mahogany wood door with prairie grid windows. They also want to remove two windows off of the rear of the property and replace it with a single window, which will be made of wood or wood composite with prairie grid style windows to match the existing windows on the house. They would also like to repair the front sidewalk leading to the home. They would also repair or replace existing wood porch with pressure-treated wood decking. And then finally, they would like to also add two ceiling fans to the front porch and replace the ceiling porch light. I also included in the agenda here the houses that surround the property. So here we have the house that's located directly to the east of the subject's property, and here we have the property directly to the south. And I also included the picture of how the house looks today for the front of the porch, as well as the rear of the property. The applicants are in the audience, and they could answer any questions that you may have.
If y'all would like to come to the podium, please state your name and your address.
My name is Diane McVeddy. This is my husband, Chris. We live at 1,000 East Main Street.
Great, thank you. Joe, before we get too far into this, I would suggest revising the introduction there. It's not a brick house, it's a brick porch. It's got siding on the building, and I don't know what kind of siding it is. Is it aluminum?
No, it's vinyl siding.
It's vinyl siding, but it's wood or something underneath it. It's not brick. So it's not a brick house.
Sure, that came out of the study for the house, yes.
Bible.
Not sure if it was changed since then, so.
I would open up the discussion first to the Commission. Do you want to go item by item, or just the whole thing in its entirety? Sometimes when it gets pretty large, I like to break it down into subsets.
Well, there are a number of items. It might be easier to tackle them.
It's actually, actually, there's a kitchen modification that's on the rear that will be a separate from the front porch. The front porch and the sidewalk repair will probably not be until next spring, but Ms. Renales had said if it was something that was going to be within the next 18 months, to go ahead and do it together at the same time.
It's good to go ahead and get it, yes, indeed. With no objections, why don't we just do it one in order as it's presented here? Let's talk about the Craftsman mahogany wood door without side lights on the front of the house. Could you describe, because you have a storm door on the front, it looks like, could you describe what that front door looks like now?
The front door now is a wood door. It's painted black, but it just has like the arch with the panels in it. It's not, it's definitely not original to the house.
It has sort of like a fan light inside the door, then, and then panels below?
Correct.
And you want to go to a Craftsman-style door, which has six lights above, which is in our packet?
Correct.
And you asked for a mahogany. Mahogany is a great material for not decaying. It's naturally decay-resistant. Are you planning to stain it or paint it?
What I would like to do is stain it. That would be my first choice, at least on the outside, is to stain it and see how it weathers.
Are there currently any side lights on either side of the door?
No, there are not. It looks, I mean, there, there's like a panel, but there's never been side lights there. I don't know if that was just decorative.
Okay, it has that appearance almost.
How long have you lived in the house?
We've lived in the house since 2000.
2000?
Yes, 18 years.
Okay, and was the, the condition as it was when you moved in, the vinyl siding and the door and everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any further questions regarding the front door request? I would note that the front door is designed as not, likely not, original to the house. It's based on artistic design. It's not period.
I don't think so.
The current door, I'm sorry, the current door, sorry, thank you. If there are no further questions, the Chair would welcome a motion, one way or the other, on this particular item?
I make a motion. We approve the front door as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor of approving the Craftsman mahogany door without side lights, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I believe, as you mentioned, we're going to the, oh, we might go ahead and jump and get to the front sidewalk leading to the home, and the, and the front porch, I believe, and the fans. Let's do those perhaps, and just do all the front items first, then we'll go to the back. So the front sidewalk leading to the home, could you describe the scope of work on that?
There's a large tulip poplar tree that obviously I don't want to cut down, but the sidewalk is broken where the roots have risen on the edge of the tree, so I'd like to repair that with an addition of a step at the sidewalk, and then probably a step over the roots, which will eliminate, there's, one of the steps off the porch is maybe two inches. It's like there's four steps currently off the front porch, and one of them is very small at the bottom, which would probably eliminate that step to just repair the sidewalk around the tree.
The vertical surface of a set of steps is called a riser, so you're saying there's three risers that are approximately the same height?
Correct.
And the bottom one is shortened, which is not according to code.
Ah, yeah, probably true.
And so your, your existing sidewalk is, would have been originally a flat sidewalk, so to speak, and so you're hoping to break it where the roots are and put a step there to not cut the roots out? Is that the case?
Correct. I want to save the tree.
Yeah. And you would be going back with similar concrete?
Mm-hmm.
What other questions does the Commission have? I think all of us are looking at the elevation, the front elevation there.
I was just going to ask how high the riser would be. Is this going to be six inches or?
Oh, no. I don't think so.
Four inches or?
Probably four to six. We have a, I've called for an estimate on a concrete person to come out and, and let me know, but he hasn't made it yet. So, no, I would like to say just as minimal as possible. I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't be opposed to putting like flagstones or something like that, but as opposed to just strictly concrete to save the tree, but it looks like everything else on Main Street is concrete sidewalks.
So long as you're within the code, height for the riser, I don't think there's any concern.
Well, my only thought was if it was too small, then, then folks could trip over.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would think at least four inches if you're going to go that way.
And it will probably have to be that. I worry about our postman as it is.
Yeah. I want to ask, have you considered if it's feasible to slope, you know, raise your sidewalk the two inches at the steps to eliminate that one step there, and then grade it to meet at some other point in the sidewalk, so there's no step in the middle of the sidewalk? I don't know if you can accomplish that and cover that root. It's too high.
You're, you're basically asking if they could ramp it then from the top of the first step, the tread, all the way to the road, or whatever it takes to get it to where?
Whatever it takes to clear that route.
Yeah.
It just seems from safety of having that step in the middle of the sidewalk.
But the sidewalk, as you see it in that picture, is on both sides like that. That whole section is.
Yeah, it looks lifted quite a few inches. Okay.
Any further questions from the board?
Are your steps painted black? Are they? I wish. My steps are indoor/outdoor carpet. Oh. There is wood underneath. Excuse me? There is wood underneath, but it's starting to decay in the corners and on one of the steps. So, but I would, I want to take the indoor/outdoor carpet off.
So you want to take the, so, so is this, let's, let's maybe add this to the question about the sidewalk. So you want to take the indoor/outdoor carpet off of the treads and risers of the steps?
Correct.
And replace the wood steps with?
Pressure-treated wood.
So back what it was?
Back to what it was, correct.
Okay. Of course, it, it wouldn't have been pressure-treated wood.
That's true.
But will you get it to be as close to the original as possible?
I don't have a problem with that.
But just something that won't decay as quickly?
Mm-hmm.
And I hope you'll pitch them like a quarter inch per foot if this is your house and this is the street, so that the water doesn't settle on the wood and it runs off easily after a rain. You don't want it to pond and freeze, for instance, in the wintertime.
Are you replacing the entire decking on the porch?
Correct.
As well as the steps?
As well as the steps.
Yeah.
Just in the, like, the only decay on the porch is like in the corners, like where the rain blows in, but it started to get soft. But it's like if you're going to do it, it's kind of a good time to do the whole thing right.
I think when you, is it carpeted on the front porch? So you're going to pull that up too?
Yes.
I would hope that when you pull it up, that whatever width the board is, that you match that with the replacement, and then a, a wood material that is naturally decay-resistant. Do you plan to paint it or leave it unpainted, stained?
I plan to leave it stained or unpainted. I don't, I would prefer not to paint it.
Depending on the wood you get, you, you potentially could.
But I could.
Of course, we won't know till you pull it off what the historical treatment was. We don't know.
Pretty common to find a lot of red cedar around here. May still be available if you sought it out.
Which would be beautiful, wouldn't it?
And after a while it turns gray and you can actually pressure-treat it and it'll go back to looking almost new.
Oh.
We used to wash it.
We used to do that at my former house here.
Yeah.
Good to know. And I'm not opposed to doing that, like if, if it's, if one, take the carpet off, if you can just repair it as opposed to replacing the whole thing.
I think if you've got soft spots, you, of course, you have to absolutely address them, but if you could match, leave what's there and match it, that would, that would save you money and it would be more historically accurate.
Right. Chris is all for saving me money.
We all understand that. Any further questions on this?
Okay, we're done about items four and five, right?
Well, what I'm trying to get is that, yes, we're going to talk about the sidewalk and the decking and the stairs as one lump approval now. I think that ties that all together. Is there a motion anyone would like to make, or any further questions?
I would love to figure out a way to not have a step in the middle of the sidewalk. That's the only thing that's bugging me. Everything else seems fine. And maybe if there's a need to raise the level of the sidewalk, if that bottom riser isn't enough, could check into reframing the stair risers whenever you redo the porch. That shouldn't be a huge change if you've already got the decking off of them. If there was a way to keep from having that step in the sidewalk.
What, what about if there's just an extra step at the street as opposed to as, because there's one step at the street now? What if there were two steps there? Is that a better or worse idea?
On the outside of the public sidewalk or on the inside?
Yes, it's a public sidewalk.
That's going to be in the city's right.
Well, the, the step is on the property.
It's on your property, on the inside of the, okay. It accomplished the goal of avoiding that step down the middle of your sidewalk. I think that's a good solution.
You would have to grade, though, more the yard to either side, so people don't fall off the sidewalk.
That's in my plan anyway. Wouldn't that be more concrete?
You could do it with dirt.
Dirt.
Put topsoil.
Did you say the tree's a tulip poplar?
Yes, it is.
You might think about planting another tulip tree on the other side of the sidewalk, because you're probably going to damage the roots. I mean, it's just.
Probably. The, we, there was a Bradford pear that we, on the other side of the sidewalk, that we had to have cut down last year because of decay and splitting, so.
They should all be cut down.
Is it there at the hedge? I think we see there's a spot there.
Mm-hmm. Well, you wouldn't today because he's come out and graded it and put grass seed.
I would also assume that some of these concrete panels are cracked and not, they look like they're almost still whole squares for the most part.
They're brick, well.
Your sidewalk.
Oh, my sidewalk. It does look like it's paneled. I mean, like it's pieces.
Those are controller expansion joints. It's a common practice when you pour that long a strip of concrete that you have a way for it, a place for it to encourage to crack or for it to expand or contract.
And since it's done that, it makes me wonder if some of these structural companies might not lift a couple of these to realign them instead of tearing them out completely.
It's a possibility.
There's some foam that they can spray underneath them to lift them a certain amount. I don't know how they control that, but it's pretty common, and it would have to be more cost-effective than replacing the entire sidewalk.
Like I said, this, we, we don't plan to do until, it will probably be next year. Our youngest daughter got engaged this week, so, Chris, I'm definitely not opposed to looking at something that's more cost-effective.
Would you rather come back? But Joe encouraged you to go ahead and get approval on this now.
Does, I mean, I'm good to come back.
I'm just thinking about how we frame the motion that we've talked several opportunities. How would we frame the motion to get it approved?
Because like I said, that, it is not something that will in all probability happen this year.
Yeah.
I think we could touch on every other item on that list, if we could maybe.
You want to just, you want to table then the sidewalk?
That's fine.
Just the sidewalk.
Okay, so let's now go back to the steps and the porch, flooring materials. Do we have a motion on that?
I make a motion. We approve the existing wood porch and wood decking as submitted.
And fans?
Sorry?
And fans?
Oh, we hadn't gotten to the fans. I was going to go to the floor and then do that real quick.
I'll second David's motion on the.
So we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Let's do the ceiling fans on the front porch. Could you present what the idea is on that?
There should be a picture in your packet of the ceiling fans. I just want some flush mount white ceiling fans. The, I don't even know that they'll be visible from the street. Right now, we use our porch a lot, and, but if it, in the summer, you have to take an outdoor fan, and of course, there's no plugs on our front porch, so we have to run an extension cord to.
So you have an existing light that you want to take out and put ceiling fans as the leave of light?
No, I want to leave in the center light.
Light's probably in the center and then put to either side?
Correct.
Okay. And you know to get an exterior-rated fan, not an interior-rated?
Yes, correct.
You would regret it afterwards, I assure you. So it's in our packet, yes, after the doors, there's a, it looks like it's a, it's hard to tell because it's white on white, but it looks like it's a five-blade, 48-inch, okay.
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions, the Commission?
Nope.
The Chair would then welcome a motion.
I move to approve the ceiling fans on the porch.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, then in the absence of further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved. Okay, I think now we're moving to the rear. You have requested then a Craftsman mahogany wood door with prairie grid windows. It is in our packet.
Correct.
It is, just for the audience out there, it is a different design. It has a small panel below and six lights above, six panes of glass, and a sort of French door sort of look.
Sort of.
The panel below, and it is a mahogany door. Can you tell us about this door? Does it, how does it fit in the window since they're, they're part of the same area?
It would have the same grid in it as the windows. Like, it wouldn't look exactly like in the picture with the divided six panes, but it would have a prairie look to it.
Let's, let's, if we could, back up a bit and talk about what is there now?
Okay.
And how you want to change it, just so we make sure the Commission's, in our packet, we have a picture showing some vehicles parked there, and there's two windows. It would look like six over six lights, and then I can't tell with the door what's there, because there's a screen door and the door may be open. I can't tell in the image.
The door's just a black painted door. It's definitely not original to the house. It has six panes, just like the windows that are to the right of the door.
And I believe there's some further history to the house about that rear of your house that might be interesting for the Commission to see.
This is a picture of the back of our house from Earth Athletics, and it shows that the windows that are there now were not original when they were. I don't know when they were.
And in fact, it appears that it may have even been a recessed porch or an outdoor port, outdoor porch with insect screening or something like that, maybe even a wood wainscot or something below it, but it was originally open, and, and so the door and the windows, the pair of windows are in infill and not original to the house.
Correct.
And the siding sort of covers the changes or modifications to the point that it looks original, but indeed, it's really not.
It is not original. The door itself doesn't even fit the opening. I mean, like, you can look at how it's framed up and see a gap of at least two inches on either side.
And so in further discussion, you want to replace the door that's there with a mahogany door?
Correct.
Similar to the picture, and then you want to, per your sketch, you want to change the pair of windows to a single window?
Correct.
Because you're going through a kitchen modification inside. Of course, we don't, we don't get into what's happening inside, just what we can see from the right-of-way.
The kitchen modification, in, in the redoing of my kitchen, I want a double oven, which will take part of the space where those two windows are. The, but I want to put a window that's similar to the windows that are in that corner end of the house. Of course, inside the house, it has the framing that's common with their era. It's like three or four inches around the window, so I want this window to have all the same on the inside, as well as the door. The, the current door is not centered, like there's some wrought iron rails around the porch. The current door is not centered in that, and it just really annoys me. So I would like it to be centered.
I understand.
More symmetrical, I guess.
Seeing the drawing, it looks like you're going to raise that window you put back in to?
Correct.
To match the same elevation as the other windows as well. So, so the goal is to?
Provide some uniformity to?
Yeah, just match the existing three that are in there.
Mm-hmm, correct.
We need to talk about the material.
Material.
Yes, what is the material for the window? We talked about the door. What is the material for the window?
Wood. I, I don't have anything in the packet. I've been talking to Ricky at Home Building Supplies, who assures me that he can match those windows that are, were approved in 2003, that are vinyl windows, with a wood window.
Which, so the, the two windows you're replacing are vinyl, but everything else is wood?
No, all of the other windows in our house are vinyl.
And the two you're removing are wood?
Correct.
Putting back a wood?
Correct.
Huh. We don't know.
I mean, I could put back a vinyl, but I didn't think that would, I didn't think that was going to fly. So every other window in my house is vinyl, with the exception of those two windows, and a window over the kitchen sink that's not visible from the street.
It's just interesting that the one we're putting back is wood and the rest are vinyl. And it's, it's just, it goes against our way of thinking and our, what we review, our design guidelines, that, you know, there might be a good argument to say, well, you can put back a vinyl since everything else is vinyl, but it would be the, you know.
I didn't even request that, because I had read, like, in 2016, when you came out with those guidelines, it was like, well, wood is what's going to be approved, so I'm not even asking for.
I've got one question on the back door. It seems in our packet, it says back, so I'm assuming that's what you want to put in, and it, it is six panels, six light panels, but in the sketch, there's many more panels in the door. It's.
The sketch is incorrect, Chris says. Yes.
The sketch says 12 lights.
Yes, no.
Okay.
How many panels will the door you want? Six, okay.
But it'll be the prairie style, the win, my existing vinyl windows.
What other questions does the Commission have?
Does this line item include the lanterns? I don't see that.
Uh, hadn't got, where, where do the lanterns go in this particular?
Above the door, where it just replaces an existing light.
Which is in the sketch.
Yes.
And the same is for the, the front as well. We forgot to mention that as well, with the, she wants to replace the ceiling porch light.
My ceiling porch light currently looks like it could have been an indoor light. I'd like a pendant light that's similar to the back porch light, but if we're doing the porch at a later, well, probably we should go ahead and maybe approve that, because we've got to have our electrical box changed out in the middle of our kitchen repairs, so that might be, the lights might be something that happens soon.
So in our packet, we have a chain hung pendant one, and that's going to go on the front porch?
Front porch, correct.
And it'll go in the same location as the one is now?
Correct.
And then the rear one is a bracket light, and looks like it is, well, I don't know if it's the same manufact, it is the same, not quite, but it's the same, same manufacturer, maybe a different one, slightly different design.
Was having trouble finding one that was the right size, because there's Was having trouble finding one that was the right size, because there's not very much room between the top of the door and soffit.
And they're both going to be black, I guess?
Correct.
Any further questions? If not, the chair would welcome a motion on the rear door and window change and the lights.
Make a motion to approve the request.
We have a second.
Second?
I have a question. The, you, sorry.
It's okay. We're, we're opening it up to discussion, so we'll throw it back to you.
That, now, the replacement window is a, is a wood window, correct? Or you want me to match the vinyl window?
No.
Wood?
Wood, as you proposed, the wood.
Correct. That's fine.
It's, it's a dangerous precedent, but I, I recognize the, if all of the rest of them are vinyl, there's the potential, this might be the one time we let one person get away with a vinyl window.
Oh, I don't, I mean, it doesn't really matter, six of one, half of nothing, the other, to me. I just want one that looks like the rest of them. But I wanted to be sure I understood what was being approved.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's, let's edit the motion that was made to define the window.
Therefore, the, the wood window, please.
Thank you.
Make the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? I think that gets everything in the list, is it not?
It does.
With the exception of the sidewalk.
Sidewalk and porch.
You'll probably talk with your contractor and see, this, the intent, and we'll come back to it whenever you're ready, to get rid of the two-inch riser, which is a trip hazard and does not meet code, and potentially either run it out to add a second step at where it meets up with the public sidewalk or lift the sidewalk somehow. I think that you'll probably go through a pricing exercise, figure out what's most cost-effective for you and what you desire, and go from there. Just a caution, if you put three steps, not that you need it, in a, a series outside on the sidewalk, you need a handrail, so stay away from it.
Yeah, I won't do that. Two would be good.
I would clarify, it was, the, only the sidewalk was tabled. The porch did get approval.
Okay, cool.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for your improvements.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll have a good afternoon.
And do we have your original copy of the photograph and do you need, you got it, okay, good. Okay. Joe, do we have any, any additional new business?
Uh, nope, I have nothing.
Any staff reports or other business?
Nope.
Okay.
I was just wondering why the site plan for cottages on Clark Boulevard was in our packet?
It wasn't in mine. Yeah, just yours. You're special.
You're special, it's not mine. You are indeed special. So I got into the printing, I mean, you didn't get up there quick on that.
I don't know about.
Uh, if not, the chair would, oh, any more business? The chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Oh, that thing.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.